Okay. Here we go.
Thank you very much. I apologize, everybody. We're all here. We're all friends. We all understand what happens. So let's move on. We just, I think we had a lively discussion on the administrative budget. If there's no more questions on that, let's move to the tier dues section.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Chair Wasp. So tier dues is another concept for the JPA agreement that is something that we've been negotiating with each other at the technical advisory committee level. And here's our proposal. The idea that based on annual operating budget, there would be three different groups of dues tiers. First tier would be for the smallest agencies that have budgets less than 10 million. When I say budget, I should say operating budget. Second tier would be agencies that have budgets between 10 and 100 million dollars. And the third tier would be any agency that is over 100 million dollars of an operating budget. So that puts the Mesquite Abeyment District in tier one, Oraloma and Hard in tier two, and the City of Hayward and the Park District in tier three. And then on the right there, it shows the different budgets. So of course, this would be true if we have other agencies join us, which of course are objective. And the question to the group of you as the board is, is this a good idea should we move forward with this idea of tier dues? The alternative would be every agency simply pays the same amount of dues. And we sort of rejected that idea because there's just so much disparity between what the smaller budgeted agencies can really afford to participate in HASPA. So in our mind, this is a way to get more participation.
Questions, comments on that?
I think yes. I think very good.
Anything else?
I agree.
Yeah, I'm pretty okay with this. I'm very interested. And if we plan on recruiting, which I hope we do, I'd be really interested in what what we could potentially get as far as dues for people like, well, we talked about Alameda County or, I mean, I'm sure whatever the percentage was of the Alameda County budget, but flood control for sure. Or maybe they would lower that to the flood control agency zone two or whatever it is. But there's some fairly wealthy agencies that I think need to be on this, this agency. And I think there's, it's very appealing when we, when we talk about that. Any wants to hear anything? Okay, so everybody agrees on the tier dues?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Excellent.
All right, we'll move to weighted voting.
So for weighted voting, I'm going to switch to Nicole Witt, our senior counsel at Hanson Bridget, give me just a moment. Nicole, hold on just a moment. Okay, Nicole, please begin.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. So Devin, if you just want to jump to the next slide, we'll dive right in. I think I wanted to just preliminarily kind of give everyone a little bit of a framing of sort of how we got to the point that we're at where we're talking about tier dues and weighted voting and sort of what this project has been. So starting out, as you all know, in September of 2022, the Board of Trustees adopted the HASPA term sheet, which was intended to be really the core of a renewed, amended and restated joint exercise of powers agreement for this agency. And the high level goals of this amended and restated agreement was to update the JPA to be, to meet HASPA's evolving needs for the future. 20, 30 years, as long as we could kind of build in as much flexibility to account for the changes that might come. You all might recall that we built in provisions into the agreement so that the agency HASPA could be managed by a manager. That manager could be a contracted individual. That manager could be an employee. An agency could manage HASPA. We had sort of all of these alternatives so that depending on where HASPA was and what it needed, it had kind of the operational language built into the joint powers agreement. And then we also built in, and one of the goals was to build in as much flexibility to address possible future expansion and operations and in management. And so this included things like a more streamlined process for adding new agencies to, to HASPA. So as we were working through this process and drafting and receiving input from the member agencies and prospective member agencies, it came to our attention, we learned that there were some key provisions of the term sheet that were found by members or prospective members to just be really untenable. And the provisions were the three-year rotation of the managing agency role. So what we had, what was contemplated was that the the role that currently the Park District fills as manager of HASPA would shift from one member to another. And we heard from the members and prospective members that there were some agencies that really didn't have the resources to take that on. And then also dues increases, including the annual escalator. We heard from some agencies that they really couldn't go over a certain amount. And so to bridge this gap, what we proposed was a tiered dues weighted voting structure. And the TAC members and the trustees, I believe, also elected to look into contracting for the role of the manager, again, to kind of defray some of these impacts. Devin, can you move to the next slide? Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about really what the value of tiered dues and weighted voting in this context is or would be for HASPA. So first and foremost, I think fairness. It really serves as a backstop to protect the agencies with the greatest exposure. So the proposal that you all are going to take a look at in just another moment contemplates that Hayward and the Park District will be responsible for over 50% of HASPA's budget. In addition, only those two agencies, at least as it's sort of currently formed, are responsible for the managing agency role. And so as HASPA becomes a larger agency and grows and professionalizes, those compliance costs will increase. I think you all were talking a little bit earlier about the budget for fiscal year 2025 and looking in particular at some of the tasks around meetings, public meetings that could be shifted to the Park District or taken on by the Park District. Again, those are costs that the managing agency would bear and that really, as contemplated now, aren't recoverable by the, by the managing agency. So there's a significant, a greater exposure for these sort of tier three as their drafted agencies. And the weighted voting structure effectively acts as a backstop. The agencies with the greatest exposure have the greatest weighted votes when it comes, when weighted voting is called for. Additionally, weighted voting allows HASPA to achieve its goals. As I mentioned before, we were hearing from member agencies or prospective member agencies that there was only a certain level of dues that they could really, of dues increases that they could really take on. And so this would give, weighted voting would give HASPA an avenue to continue to achieve its goals. Because if HASPA intends to be a regional entity with an expanded role in activities, it's really reasonable to expect that that will result in increased costs. And so the, this structure as contemplated and as we've sort of discussed with the TAC really is, relies on sort of an understanding that the members must be willing to accept increased dues beyond the current proposed budget, that there may be changes in expansion in activities. And if that comes, then very likely dues will increase as well. And weighted, weighted voting gives HASPA an avenue to achieve that. And then in addition, it also encourages collaboration. As we are contemplating this tiered dues weighted voting structure, the general rule is majority vote. So every action will really only require a majority vote unless weighted voting is called for. So in our experience, we have clients who have weighted voting sort of baked into their governance structure, but they've never called for it because, or never relied upon it because it, the agencies sort of understand that it's out there and therefore work more collaboratively to reach agreements. And as I've sort of, my experience at least in, in working with you all is that you have a similar approach, that sort of collaborative, unanimous agreement seems to be what your practice is. And so I just want to stop there if I could. And I'm happy to sort of respond to any questions or I invite any discussion about these pieces before shifting to what the proposal is before you all today.
You want to have any questions, sort of, Nicole?
Not, I'm not about the waiting. I understand.
It sounds pretty good, Nicole. Continue.
All right, can we go to the next slide, Devin?
Give me a moment.
Okay. So this is the weighted voting dues structure that the TAC is, has considered and is putting before the board today. As you'll see, each agency is assigned a tier. We looked at sort of what those tiers were a couple of slides ago. And then the way we would draft this into the JPA is really, we would tie the dues contributions to the percentage of the vote. So we wouldn't tie, we wouldn't draft the amount of the dues. We would draft the percentage of the weighted vote. So that if the dues amount increases, if the budget amount increases, the dues will increase in accordance with each member's percentage of the total 100% vote. So that builds in that flexibility that if the, you know, $130,000 number is, is correct in 2025, but in 2026 it's higher or lower, that the, the dues will adjust accordingly. And that really sort of bakes in a little bit more flexibility and longevity into this agreement because it gives, it's not the kind of thing that will have to be renegotiated when the budget is reset. And, you know, I think, as I said, I think it is important to have a frank and open discussion about what the agencies can, and the member agencies and the prospective members, and even, you know, folks who aren't at the table right now, could really afford from a dues perspective. Because I think as a, for sort of the strength and the longevity of the agency, it's beneficial to have members who are, who have joined and who have some intention of staying. If there is a lot of movement in and out of agencies as part of HASPA, then that can really create some disruption and can make the agency overall less stable. So I, I think, you know, we sort of put this forward, but I want to just reiterate and highlight that if the agency's intent is to grow, and that's something that folks understand and would like to have going forward, then I do think it's important to consider, you know, what is the appetite and the ability of current members, future members, you know, other folks that you all would like to recruit and bring in to actually kind of contribute and to continue to contribute at some of these higher levels for the sort of strength of the agency going forward.
Good.
Great. Any comments, questions, my peers?
I think this would be a deal breaker for ours if you're saying that we're going, our dues are going to double in 2025 based on the proposed budget. I don't know where the grant writing piece would come in. If you're saying that if we're going to be tied to 24,700, double what we would be paying. I'm not sure my board members would support that. So I guess my question, Nicole, would be how is the the grant money that is received, how is that equated with the overall budget?
So I think this may be a little bit of a question for Devin as well. But I think one thing to think about is, or at least what I would suggest, is that the grant writing component is necessarily variable. And so if you want to, what we're, we're thinking about and looking at as we're building this is a structure that has kind of a baseline. And it may be that HASPA gets grants and those grants are able to be applied to some of the budgetary costs that Devin spoke to earlier. But as of right now, that's not, that's not something that we know. So I, that's why I think it does require a bit of sort of an eyes wide open approach, that if the intent is to grow, there may be grants. We don't know yet exactly what those grants, those grant funds could be applied for. There's some ambiguity there. Devin, I'm not sure if you want to add anything more.
Yeah, I, I would agree. The proposed budget that we looked at a few slides ago, that got us to this $130,000 block. That's what you're showing here. How we agree to spend that is a matter of the budget that you end up adopting, which will happen in the future. There is currently one grant that has already been applied for. That's the San Francisco SRA SRA partnership grant with EPA dollars that was presented to us a couple of months ago. So that's being deliberated now by EPA. If we're successful, HASPA could see several hundred thousand dollars come to do a lot of different projects, including prioritizing some of the capital projects that are in the shoreline master plan. And some of those dollars could be used for administering HASPA that we would come to you with a proposal for. But I think what Nicole was saying is that this $130,000, this is sort of the baseline of what we all believe HASPA will cost in 2025 to be a professional five-member agency or professionalize it from beyond the point where it is today. So we're interested, we've had this dues structure of about $12,000 per agency for several years. But we recognize that we've really gone as far as we can hit that dollar amount. So we did create one tier, tier one, that has this lower voting ability. That's what the Mesquite Abeyment District is in. That's about the same amount of money because they share the same concern. But if we're going to keep this three-tiered structure that we showed you, then this is the dollar amount that, that results. So even if we were to bring down the grant writer, this would still be the dues for 2025 under this current proposal.
Okay. I understand it. I'm just saying, knowing my board members, this would be a deal breaker. Because here, period. I'll just say that. So let's suppose that a grant, a grant does come in. Could part of those funds of that grant be used to offset, let's say, or to help an organization stay favored to? So I, I, it may be that Oraloma decides, no, that's too expensive. But I think losing a member can be difficult for us. So let's say we receive $700,000 grant. Could we use 13 of those in order to make up for them? But of course, that would open it up because then Hard would say, well, we can't handle that, you know. And Moxios could say the same thing. So I'm just telling you this is, you know, it's could be the elephant of the room to, to a degree, you know. How much could we do? Losing members is not a great idea. Anyway, so that's a bar. Well, that's, that's my question. How, and you explained to me how it, the grants correlate to the budget. And I understand, I understand it and I understand weighted voting. And so maybe an option, I don't know how we can flow through the tiers, but maybe we say, okay, we want only 10%. You know, I don't know. But I, I just know the ticket price of 34,700 is not going to sit well with my board. It doesn't sit well with me. I, I understand it and I know the 130,000 does not, is not a lot, you know, in, in correlation to what we're trying to do. But I also understand our own operation and our budgets and our responsibility as well. So, and this is, I won't say it's out of my wheelhouse. I will say it's in addition to what we're doing.
I was wondering, what would be future planning? I know we have a plan this far ahead, but I mean, is there a relationship to, I, I assume that we have a master plan. We have certain projects that are, help each of our agencies. I'm, I'm, I'm sure that there are many grants in the, in the wheelhouse. There's lots of grants going on, lots of opportunity. The SFA Restoration Authority gives out 25 million a year in grants every year for the next, well, they've been in business for three or four or five years. They're going, I think it's a 20-year program, right, or 25-year, 20-year? And so there's lots of opportunity out there. I'm wondering if, based on this, can we expect any grants we apply for to try to mirror the, the relationship of 26% versus 10%? Would grants be directed in that direction or would an agency that, you know, could an agency that, yeah, beating around the bush here? Could a, could a 19 or 19% agency get all of the grants? If we have 5 million grant, would we be able to split it up? Obviously not, because there are specific projects. But would we as a group try to do that? Because I mean, I'm personally not willing to agree to carry somebody along that says they can't do it. Based on, I mean, then we've got to do something and we're, we're not going to do anything for 135, 30 grand. I mean, that's, that's just not going to work. There's, that's, that's the bare bones thing. If, if we get very lucky and we do, I think we'll, we'll not be lucky by hard work. We'll recruit other agencies and that'll lighten the load, but we'll still, the load will get heavier as we do more projects and we get more popular and, and things come our way. It's, the master plan came out, it was very, very simple. It cost almost a half million dollars and it suggested it was over a billion dollars, I think it was, to do this project. And that was, that was three years ago or four or five. It's probably double that now. So I don't think, I mean, it's daunting, but not, I mean, we'll, we'll get it. Somebody's going to, somebody's going to do something about the bay. Somebody, somebody's going to do something. And in my opinion, if we're prepared with a master plan and we bite the bullet and say, we're going to stick with this and keep forging ahead, then, then we'll benefit because other agencies aren't doing as much as we are, in my opinion. So we're right there. We're, they keep talking about shovel ready. We're, we're more than shovel ready. We're shovel ready and we're chomping at the bit. So I would encourage everybody to, 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 you know, this is, I think that's a small increase. And I think we just need to go forward with that and do that. But, you know, I personally wouldn't be willing to carry someone else's load. I just don't think it's that big of a work.
And I guess what I'm saying is that I'm not sure my organization have the appetite to put forth that.
Dr. Duncan, do you think, would it make sense for someone from HASPA, let's say Dennis, or, or any of you to come to a board meeting of Oraloma Board and try to make the case? I mean, I'm sure you made the case already for a reason.
I, I, as I said, I don't think anything is really unrealistic about the numbers. You know, I, I know how much it costs. I'm just saying for us to go from 12 to 24, that's a leap. And it is what it is. And they're not going to trust any of you anymore than they're going to trust me.
That's right.
That's the reality of it. And, you know, and you know, I don't want to put my general manager on the spot, but he knows his board just as well as I, I do. But we have a member. And we can sell it, you know, but I don't know if they'll buy it. But the idea of selling it is a very good one. I think that's I mean, it's like I have to look at Eric. Eric, is that doable for us from 12 to 33?
Oh, we, yeah, we're, we're okay with the amount for Hayward.
Yeah, you guys are good.
But yeah, I understand. I totally understand the concerns for a smaller agency.
I mean, I don't think it's unrealistic for us to say, this is a, this is a bit much. I mean, it's, you know, what is, what is reasonable is what I would propose. You know, my board members, okay, we can't go in for this much. What, what is realistic? If we want to be a part of this. Because with, with our chair, that there are many grants out there. Maybe there's a grant out there that could be used by every, by all the agencies participating to offset in a particular year the dues. So send a grant in 2026 for so many, so many dollars? And then it could be a decrease of 10, 20, 30% for each one of us. That's a possible. I don't know what the grant writer will find, but there, there's money out there. I, I guess the, the basic issue is tying dues into the operating budget. That's it. That's the issue.
To Oraloma's operating budget?
No, to this. I mean, the 19% in relation to whatever, whatever this unknown budget is going to be as an increase. As we know, the 130,000 is, that's just minimal to, you know, to get it going. But if it goes up to, what, 250,000, you know, what is, what does that do? You know, it's 19% of that, that I think is, is, is the crux of the challenge that I'm going to have selling, selling this. Will help you sell. Think? Will help you sell.
And maybe now that I always pick on the technical advisory committee, but they know more than we do. It's, I, I remember the master plan and I'm not picking on Oraloma, I'm just saying, we're using your example. I think you've got the biggest piece of infrastructure. You've got the most to lose, right? With that big sewage treatment plant that everybody in your district depends on. It would be a catastrophe, a loss. If we lose, I mean, let's face it, Hard and Regional Parks, we lose the Bay Trail, we'll just move back 1,000 feet. We'll just keep moving back 1,000 feet till Seaview stops. It's not that hard. But you've got big infrastructure. I mean, are there projects? Does anybody know? I, I can't remember. I do remember the master plan. I do remember there's going to be some heavy, heavy duty shielding or what's the word, hard? You know, these wonderful horizontal levees aren't going to apply. We're going to protect Oraloma Sanitary District. We're building a fortress around Oraloma Sanitary District. I think that if we can show your colleagues maybe that, hey, this is the plan. This is what we plan on doing. We want to protect your resource and here's the master plan. It's, it's in writing, we're going to do it and we'll, I don't know, we can't guarantee grants will come in. But obviously the people that are granting the money and the state of California and the, all of the agencies that are giving grants are trying to protect resources that are critical, like a sewage treatment plant on the shoreline, which most sewage treatment plants are. So I, I think it just makes sense to make an investment of 12 grand extra to be a part of an agency that's working in your, in, and you're working with a group of people for a stated goal of protecting all of our resources, but especially yours. But I'm not preaching to you.
All I'm going to say to you is that that, everything you say is, is, is the truth. But the reality of it is, you know, other dues that we pay, pay, yeah, that we're a part of, they only increase. But the cost of living, you know, whatever, the 8%, whatever. But, you know, to tie us in to that amount is, I'm just saying, it's, it will be a hard sell. I can sell it. You can try to sell it. But the reality of it is to tie our, our dues to the operating budget amount is, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's a lot. I wanted to speak, sharing.
Nicole?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no problem. I think this is a really good and really important discussion. This idea, right, that there is instability created This idea, right, that there is instability created when you have members leaving, or that may happen. If the dues increase beyond. Um, one thirty is, is folks are talking about, what does that look like realistically for the members? And I, so I think this is a really good discussion. I just kind of want to. Reach ahead a little bit to the next segment that Devon is going to talk about. I think the other. Piece of this that may be work, worth talking about is what would it look like for. For Haspa to have sort of a more robust TAC and for the TAC to be a place where agencies that. Can't afford significant increases in dues or to sort of prioritize the projects in the same way. Where they could have a role and could participate. Obviously, there would be dues contributions. It would be less. They'd have an opportunity to have a voice and a, and a say. Or, you know, a voice and share their input. To the, um, trustees and the TAC and TAC members could very frankly be a. Resource for future partnerships. So that if there are specific projects that are targeted to one agency's. Infrastructure to their, the work that they're doing that is kind of critical to their mission. That Haspa could contract with that agency and enter into a contract whereby there is a sharing of funds for that specific project and that specific work. That's another topic that we talked about with the TAC because I think it is. Important to really kind of have a, a, a frank conversation about what is realistic. Um, so that the agency itself is as strong as it can be going forward. And I know that, you know, this, this discussion of sort of infrastructure and impacts, there may be others on the call who can weigh in. Um, more on that and give some feedback on, on those pieces, but I think that is also a very important piece of the discussion. So I just wanted to. Move, bring in that, that bit of what's coming next on the agenda, because I think it might be helpful for the discussion now as well.
Thank you, Nicole. That's. Does anyone want to submit any input on this?
Oh, a question. If we get a couple of new members and they are tier two, and they, they may effectively read all of dues down.
Won't be up for this budget. I mean, if.
So, I'm assuming the hundred thirty thousand is gonna stay, it's gonna go up a little bit every year, I would imagine. Inflation, but the, um, the dues, if we get more members in, could that offset some of this problem?
Oh, without a doubt. There, there's no question. We alluded, um. Obviously it would be, uh, well. Yeah, I think the answer to your question is yes. I think everybody agrees that. Yes, to what extent? I don't think it'll be, you know, well. You're right. I, I look at some big money agencies, uh, that could get in here and then benefit just as much as we can. The cost would be a little bit more for. Staffing and things like that, all the general stuff. But yeah, you're right. I think we work, we, we need to increase. We're, we're like, uh. My, increase our membership and then these things will, will go down. I think we could also be leaner and meaner. We, we don't, this is the first time we've seen this budget. Obviously it's gonna go up by at least the cost of living, but there are some ways we can, we can hone down some of these things. I mean. The Regional Park District has an internship program. Once again, I, I really love interns. I work with them personally when I worked in Park District. And now we hire them. They're smart. They're vibrant. They're, they're enthusiastic to suggest we pay somebody who runs a website. Why don't we just get an intern to do it? And I think we can work these things out. If we, we have people, we have these types of issues that are people who are saying, we don't wanna. You know, we can't increase our dues. We're not gonna get this for, and we need to figure out how to cut back. It's just. General economy, like in your family. If you can't bring enough money home, you're not going to the movie theater. You're gonna watch. Little reruns of I Love Lucy or whatever it is. And I think we can hone this down. I, I personally think we can do this a lot easier. I, um. As much as I love transparency, I just would love to, I, I don't hear an outcry to see that we need to spend the money to zoom this. And, and, and I think as long as we, like in the old days, keep, continue to invite people to come to our meetings, make them very accessible. People can come to us, have a rotating show. We move around Hayward. Everyone, same area. It's all Hayward. We don't have a big regional area. We don't have people coming from Hercules and Antioch and places like the Regional Park District Board meetings. They can show up to Hayward if they want to. If we want to, we could have a couple of meetings in the evenings to make it more convenient for people that, that work. Uh, we can post really good, uh, agenda packets, post really good minutes. If we're more transparent and let everybody knows what, what's going on, we can target people with our agenda packets. Uh, target environmental agencies, target people that are, would be concerned with these type of issues and, uh, post them. It's very simple. Any library will post our stuff. Uh, we could even be, uh, getting all the local newspapers, the Castro Valley Forum. Would love to probably post something and say, hey, ask us out of a meeting. Come on down. We got great cookies and excellent. Job and stuff like that. And then some lively conversations and topical conversations. So. I, I just think, I, I don't, I don't think we have a panic and abandoned ship. It's. We can get to this budget. I think we can work to honing it down and work towards getting more members. You know, we keep saying.
No, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm. Speaking to reality, okay? And I, and, and I'm glad you brought up the point of, um, you know, the more members, the more we, we share the cost. And, and as I said, I don't think the cost is unreasonable. I'm just saying that for my organization, you know, going from. Doubling the cost of dues is, is something that's, I'm not sure that, to use your word, they're gonna have the appetite for. Um, and so I just have a question. If. If flood control became a member, what would their, what tier would they fall in? Do we know?
Well, that, that was my question. I mean, obviously they're in Alameda County. What's that? Three billion dollar budget? We're rich. We're, we're done forever. But no, it'll probably be backed out of the flood control agency. They're rich too. But then again, there are different zones, if I'm not mistaken, in the flood control district. And I think we're zone two out here or something. It doesn't matter, but there's five zones. And they all have their own individual budgets. So, uh, we would be. And it's probably ten million dollars, I'm guessing. I have no idea.
Probably tier two.
Probably tier two, yeah. But you know, the state of California, who knows, uh? Uh, if, if your friend from Newsom's office might get in here, and I would bet, uh, that's, that's probably discretionary. They'll, they'll talk to anybody about it, but they're.
But anyway, I, you know, I'm not saying that, I, I mean, we were really pleased that, um, we saw the administration. You know, that the two agencies are going to rotate administering. To me, that was a, a big hurdle. And so I'm not saying that. We're abandoning ship. I'm just stating, this is a challenge that we. Have to, have to, uh, overcome.
Well, and that's that, we all agree with that. There's, there's no question that people face different challenges. But I mean, for this agencies, if in fact Oreloma had to leave. In two years, when we build it up to be big, I bet you, they would want to come back. Because I, I really think if we can quantify who's gonna, who's gonna, um, win on this deal, I could think Oreloma's gonna be right at the top of the heap. So I, I think we can prove that it's.
And all I'm saying is that, you know, we could benefit us, but if we don't have the money to pay for the benefit. You know. But then again, it's back to. The board having its priorities. And so, you know, that's a must out of the net, you know, to talk about that, so. But I, you know, I understand the tier. I understand the waiting and I understand, you know, understand that it's correlated to right now. Uh, the budget and, uh. We'll think what the next step for plans is.
All right. So where were we, Nicole?
That is the end of my presentation. I can hand it back to Devon, uh, and he can finish up, uh, the last few slides.
Okay. Well, you, you did finish up and you did mention the role of technical advisory committee. I think, yeah, we do have, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we have. Let's just call it five members on the, uh, board of trustees so far, but we have extra TAC members. I mean, uh, the flood control. District is a TAC member. And we're getting six thousand out of them. So it's not a. We're not.
The TAC members don't pay.
I thought there was a proposal for tax, tax members pay.
That might have been in the, um, term sheet, but that has not advanced in our discussion. TAC members do not pay when they participate in that.
Sorry, I mentioned that. Um, okay. So let's, um, any, any, um. Members, trustees have any more comments or do you want to do some summarization?
Let me just finish these last two slides and we can open it back up. Um, so the, the, what the trustee, um, director. Duncan was just mentioning is the rotation of the managing agency. So we need some definitions in the. JPA agreement that explain what a managing agency will do. It's currently what. City Hayward has been doing with Haspa. It's now what Park District is doing. We are running the administration side of Haspa. Once we have a third-party administrator, then the role will be about. Um, basically administering the contract with whatever consultant team that is. So that's what the managing agency would be. There would be a rotation and we've agreed amongst ourselves and the technical advisory committee that the rotation would just be of those tier three agencies. So that's the largest agencies, Park District and City Hayward. So that takes the burden away from smaller agencies of having to administer Haspa. Even for a year or two years or three years. The idea of a supporting agency, we don't have that language now. We need to have a definition of. Let's say Haspa contracts with Oreloma to do some sort of civil engineering study about the Oreloma marsh or. The, uh, operations and effects of sea level rise. There needs to be a, a term for. An agency that is involved with Haspa on a contractual basis. So that's the idea of a supporting agency. Um, and then surcharges are things that could come up outside of this operating budget of hundred thirty thousand. In the future, we might collectively agree that we need to do some sort of technical study and we need to hire a consultant and we all contribute. That would be a surcharge. So those are those three definitions that are, are new. And then just the last slide here about the technical advisory committee, what Nicole was saying is. We can make the technical advisory committee as strong or as weak as, as the board prefers. And in Nicole and the vision of the technical advisory committee. It could be a place for smaller agencies that can't really afford to be on the board of trustees. They could still have a say in the direction of Haspa that they join, as long as we write the bylaws to include them in decision-making. So right now, the TAC, just to be clear, is made up of staff from agencies on the board, prospective agencies. And a group of other agencies that are, have either land ownership or interest in the shoreline. So of course, we're hoping to expand that as well. Um. And if we write the bylaws, it could allow agencies with smaller budgets to still participate. So that could be, uh, it's sort of a backstop, I guess, for agencies that can't be on the board of trustees. And so the next steps are, just to give everyone the framework, um, we will have another meeting coming up. At some point, we'll be bringing back probably in February, a clean copy of the JPA agreement. For consideration by the board. And in February or March, we'll have already vetted that. To attorneys and we'll be coming to you for a vote. So we've got a couple more months where we need to draft the language, get everyone comfortable with the attorneys. With the language and bring it back to you considering that. That would not happen before February. Then once there's approval, of course, each of the trustee agencies has to adopt it on their own. And that would happen in, um. That would happen in February or March. And then by April and May, we would be going out for a competitive IFP for. The contract to administer Haspa with agencies that are interested. And then just to remind everybody that fiscal year begins in July. So with that, let me stop. And we can open up more conversation. I understand. Uh, council members, so many, you have a hard stop. It's four thirty now. How much?
I can go another twenty minutes.
Okay, great. I think.
Okay. Well, then let me start by saying that we have a, our, our, our charge today or our opportunity today. Is to vote and, and, and to move these recommendations. We have the recommendations all reviewed or amended and restated joint exercise of the powers agreement. Which includes the administrative budget. It includes the tiered dues, the weighted voting. Uh, and the proposed twenty twenty-five membership dues. Uh, and then obviously that's important, the managing agency and supporting agency. Uh, uh, and, um. And the surcharges issue, which was brought up and the role of the technical advisory committee. So let's, um. We, we need to get to a vote on that today, but if there is any further discussion, please, um, let me know.
I like the most, so I'll move on then.
We have a motion.
I really need to take this to the board.
Well, that's, that's, this, this was what we, we, we do. If you, if, if this group moves seconds and, and approves. This recommendation, then we will take it to our board and Devon had the schedule up there and hopefully we'll get this voted on really quickly. So we'll figure who's in, who's out and continue with who's in and who's out. Um, but this, this is performative. You're not. We're just saying, we, we're gonna move these. We, we as a group agree that this is the direction we want to go in. And this is the blueprint that we want to use. And then you take it to your, your boards and, and. Flash it out there. Okay, we motion a second.
If we don't, let's see if there's any public.
Oh, without a doubt. I was gonna go move now too. We have a motion a second. Any further questions or comments from trustees? Here we, no, pardon me. I have a couple. Um, a couple of things I'd just like to, to, to bring up. One thing that we haven't mentioned here, uh, I hope this works, uh, in the spirit of, of, um. Well, I don't know, congeniality, uh, can't pronounce congeniality, should have said. The presidency usually, or the chairmanship, chairpersonship usually rotates between the managing agencies as we remember. We all remember the past, it used to be five years of hard running, at five years of Hayward running and five years of Regional Park District. In my opinion, I would like to add an addendum to this if we could or, or consider it in the future. It's not a big deal. But I think just because I don't, I, I never liked the idea and I've served on agencies where JPAs where it was weighted and, you know, the big powerful. Free vote Oakland and the Waste Management Authority and the two vote, Alameda County would always, you know. Dwarf my agency. So I, I didn't feel good about it. But one thing we can do is rotate presidency among each agency. I'd really like to see that happen. One year. I think one year's enough. Five years was way too long. If anybody hasn't, if you need two years, I'm not certain, but in the spirit of, of. Peace and love and whatever else we're talking about here, I'd like to see it, the, we add that the president, because it's not addressed in this. Even though the park district will be managing agency and Hayward will be a managing agency, I don't want it to have those two agencies dominated. I'd like the, the chair of this committee to be rotated. If anybody agrees, can we put that as an amendment or a recommendation? We can probably deal with it later, really, but I, I'd like to offer that up right now as well.
It's always been there and sometimes people want to just concede to.
Oh, yeah, everybody would have the ability to. It's, you ask, just it comes to you. You either accept or you don't accept. So. Is that a nod or Devon or some parliamentarian tell me if we should vote on this or just bring it up in another meeting?
I think we'd like to, uh, if it's part of your motion, we'll bring back language that, that addresses this in the clean JP that will say.
If I could, sorry, if I could just interrupt. So what we draft, what we drafted in the JPA so far is that. Those types of decisions are deferred to a later developed document, the bylaws. And so that's the, so that is where that discussion should live. And if there's direction from the trustees to incorporate that kind of language. I would suggest that the, um, that Haspa handle it when it develops the bylaws.
Thank you, Nicole, for that valuable information. Now I'm gonna segue, we'll do the same deal about attorneys. I was gonna move into this. I'd just like to emphasize, and this is just my editorial comment, having been on this committee for a long time, we've. Well. Turn off your TV, Nicole. You've been very valuable. Thank you. I, we, no, I'm joking. You don't know. I joke a lot, but in, in all seriousness, you've been incredibly helpful. We couldn't have done with this out there. This has gone on forever. And if, in my opinion, we've spent our entire dues, thirty-six thousand for this last year. We're gonna spend twelve thousand, fourteen thousand more, probably more now in the next year. We're burning our dues on attorneys, which are, it's. Wonderful to hear from you and it's, it's wonderful to get these clarifications, but we need to get moving on what we're doing, not spending money on, on attorneys. Uh, so I, I really just think we either need to, what's the expression that I can use in public? That would be the best way I'd say it. Yes, it's, this agency won't die. We love to have more members. We love all our members, but we need to start moving forward and, and, you know, the sea level's not.
And show people what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly. So that's just my editorial. So if there's no further discussion, I'll open it up to the public, which we didn't allow here. I hope that gentleman was on the screen before. So that's just my editorial. So if there's no further discussion, I'll open it up to the public, which we didn't allow here. I hope that gentleman that was on the screen before doesn't have anything to say. Hearing no public comment. Um, then I will, uh, ask for a vote. All in favor of these recommendations? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very, very much. Um, we will now move to, um. New business. And we're planning on moving November night meeting.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to explain. So the regular central meeting is November ninth. We could continue to hold that meeting. We had one item from EDA that might be possible. But we would not have any JPA progress in that time. It's too short a time. So the question to the group is, would you like to have an informational meeting in November? Or would you like to have a meeting in December? Again, it wouldn't be in new JPA language that short a time. But it would give some more time for the tack members to digest what we've learned here. And maybe make some refinements. So the, the date of December seventh, December fourteenth, those were floated around. The next first meeting of the new year, we would not have until February. Uh, that would give enough time to prepare and vet the clean copy of the JPA agreement. With the, uh, with our attorneys. So the question before you is, we just keep the November ninth meeting or should we postpone to, uh, a day in December?
I wouldn't have any problem going to December. If that date works for everyone. I think it would be seven. December seven. Um, if that's the proposal and everybody can do it, I think that would be great. That accommodates everyone. I think the idea of not having too much, uh, on an agenda. Uh, I know that's the next item down, but I have lots of agenda items that I've dealt with in December seventh or planned for. So if, if December seventh works, um, let's, let's make that happen.
Right. Could you just clarify that? Uh, we did say December fourteenth on the agenda. But, oh, and this motion is for December seventh.
Okay, December seventh, three o'clock. Uh, where would the location be here?
Thanks to Erica, yes, the location would be there.
Excellent, great. Uh, so be it.
I will be in Austin, but I can zoom in.
Great. All right, does the tack committee have any, or reports? Great, it's nice. Uh, thank you for all the great work you've done and helped me along with this process. Um, any announcements from the board?
Good meeting, thank you.
Okay, um, we have agenda setting for our next meeting. Anybody have any agenda setting items? I'm just going to harp on the same thing I always do if anyone else says anything, um, that being, um. Actually, what was it? Oh, if we lack items, I would love an agenda item to talk about. What we talked about and then this, I saw a lot of enthusiasm in this group. Getting together a packet to show ourselves off. How would we do about that? And do we have any ideas? Do each of our agencies have, um. Fairness, festivals, things that we can do if we, if anybody, anywhere, attack committee, everybody. Can, can we brainstorm some ideas from areas? Should we go to mayor's conferences? Should we go to city councils? Uh, should we go, well, we've already hit all that, but can we get other people excited? Can we target agencies? Can we make kind of brainstorm agencies that we like to target and not just say, hey, do you want to be a member of haspa? Here's our big push. Here's our master plan. Here's all the great graphics we just. Have in our, in our area. And maybe we can develop a, maybe a little video or something we can show in the city council meetings or. Rotary clubs or things like that to make ourselves known. So that could be a topic. I'd also like to talk about, and I do this every year. I don't know if it works, but I, I just looked up that the king tides, which are the best example of what, the work we're trying to do are this year are. Somewhere, it doesn't matter. I think it's, it's, uh, January eleventh and twelfth and February seventh, I think. Um, we could look that up later, but I, you know, if you get a good king tide and you get a good storm, it's, it's great. The water comes over the levee and scares the heck out of everybody. It's a, it's a great example of what's going to happen, I guess. So, um, we might want to host a little event there. Or even, well, not be in there because we, we don't have a meeting there, but, uh, I think there's a lot of good subjects we could bring up and, uh. Uh, also, just, you know, can we keep brainstorming this area? I just thought the Regional Park District is having their ninetieth birthday celebration and we're going to celebrate all year long. And hosting something down at the shoreline is, is totally appropriate for people looking for ideas in the park district, so we could have a haspa day at the shoreline. Uh, Hard Conversely is celebrating their eightieth birthday. Uh, anniversary. They'll be doing events, so we should be taking advantage of that. And I'm not sure if any other agencies are still doing birthdays, anniversaries or celebrating anything, but we, we could really brainstorm that at the next meeting and talk about that.
I would, I would love to, of course, to talk more about recruiting other agencies. I love that idea. Um, maybe us, the new ones, not the new ones, but the ones that don't. Have as large budgets as you guys for us to play a key role in trying to get, um, other agencies to join. You know.
Agenda items of different.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate.
Oh, right. Thank you. And, and I mean, and literally, we could, we can, we're, we got to get this going. So we've been unsuccessful with flood control district, but as I am. My understanding is it's because we've talked to the director of the agency, planning agency, and. They're not interested. That's a personal person. I think we have Alyssa Marquez, who was now supervisor, who was the chair of this committee last year, prepared out loud. She knows exactly what a good work we're doing. Nate Mylee is in the area. He's, he would benefit from this, the good works of us. So I think we need to talk to those folks, not to.
I agree. I'm, I'm just saying that I, I think that that is, it'd be a great topic for us to talk about and to develop. The script. That's all. I can reiterate that.
Uh, any comments and packages, anyone? Thanks, Charlie, Rick. So, um. My script says that I am supposed to say. It is now, uh, four forty-four.
Yeah.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Nicole.